I'll call this City of International Falls Budget and Finance Meeting to Order. It's 4:00 PM. Please rise, we'll say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Holden is absent today. We will move on to new business. First, I would bring up to consider approval of Casell Multiple Module Add-on Proposal and authorize the signing of the Master Service Agreement. Emma, is this something that you'd like to discuss? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, back in, I believe it was June, Sherri, Lisa and myself took on and did a demo with Casell, which is our financial software provider for over 25 years. And we had them demo for us a couple of different modules that we do not currently have, but we believe would be beneficial. And we wanted to see whether they would potentially suit our needs and alleviate some redundancies in our processes. And through that process, we realized that this was a very good fit for our organization. So, got them to quote that out then. And then, once we got our preliminary budget tentatively approved, I asked for them to draft up a formalized quote package and then, an agreement. Obviously, we would be asking that the City Council approve this with the understanding that these would come out of 2026 budgeted funds. But overall, it's something that we've wanted to do for a very long time and just assumed that it was completely outside of our feasibility. And when we looked at it with them, it was actually within reason. You know, most of it's the one-time costs. The monthly costs are much more minimal. So, I stand for questions if you have any.
Questions from Council?
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
In speaking with Emma and Lisa, who handle the payroll and the accounts payable, it sounds like this would streamline, or it is my understanding, and I did, looked at part of the presentation as well, would streamline the efficiencies of the payroll, especially less burdensome on the department heads when it comes to the payroll, having the employees be more actively involved in that process and streamlining through to the payroll person who, Emma, who handles the processing, the final processing of it. Same with the accounts payable. The accounts payable would be more streamlined with the department heads having the document electronically, them, they coding it according to the budget that they've had and have been approved, and then forwarding that electronically to the accounts payable department to process internally instead of a lot of scanning and copying and reprinting and re-scanning and different things like that. A lot of streamlining and, as Emma indicated, the less redundancy and less handling of the paperwork.
I have one question, I guess, although you bring that. So, will that, will this be able to do electric time cards?
Yes.
With that?
Yes. So, the AP is a considerable time-saving. So, at this point in time, our system is, while we have streamlined to the best of our abilities with what we have, everything is pretty well manual. So, we have people handling any particular invoice upwards of four to five times from the receipt of the invoice through processing and coding to having signatures, to then having to stamp with check numbers and then having to have staff re-scan them in all, once they're processed. It's just a very redundant process. And it's considerably time-consuming for all staff involved. Payroll, it would essentially eliminate all of the paper. So, it's gonna be, everything's gonna be electronic for, from submission of requests for leave off. There are integrations with our existing software. So, I've talked to a number of our supervisors and kind of got their feedback on a little bit of this. But there's a ton of integration that we can do with their existing software and scheduling softwares like Alad Tech and First Do for both police and fire. So, that is our ultimate goal, to try to kind of build a system that works in unison with the systems we already have, but eliminating a considerable amount of time where they're having to reduplicate the same data over and over and over before they get it to me.
I would, and I'd just like, cause I experienced that transition and when I was gainfully employed. And it does save a lot of time, makes it, um, both, cause I did it from a staff employee to management and it streamlined, made it much easier for everybody.
Yeah.
With the electric. All I know for sure is electronic time cards and that.
Right. And I mean, we have roughly 10 to 12 paper boxes every year of just payroll documentation. So, that would, you know, minimize it to next to nothing in terms of having to, and it's going to extremely improve our auditing process because we will be able to give auditors an electronic portal for access for both payroll and accounts payable. So, it, it's, it's gonna make things a world, world better than where we're currently at.
One question, the conversion price?
Mm-hmm.
That's not included in the code. Do we know what that is?
Um, the conversion price is on, what page are you looking at?
Right behind the signature page, like, third or fourth.
Are you talking on the Master Services Agreement? Because the one-time cost is the 75-60.
Okay.
So, that's, that's our one-time cost. And then, 550 would be for the two. And it breaks it out on, I think it's the third page in of the agreement proposal, breaks it out by what module. So, essentially, the AP workflow is 175. And then, the balance of that 550 is pertaining to the payroll process because of all the different things that we need from timekeeping to leave time requests. And it'll allow employees to have the ability to queue up their leave balances. They'll be able to request leave off in there. It'll be, it'll make things considerably more user-friendly for employees as well.
Seems very reasonable for that type of service.
We were shocked because I think we were all like, we would've gone to this that much sooner if we had realized it wasn't, you know, outside of our feasibility.
Is there a motion to add this to the next City Council meeting agenda?
So.
By Counselor Buller?
Take it.
And Wagner, thank you. Discussion?
Yeah. So, do the employees all have access to a terminal somewhere that they can?
Yep. So, what they'll-
Everybody's got easy access, so if-
We'll be making sure as we move through this process, the recommendation is to do stationary iPads for like specifically public works.
Yep.
They would also have the ability, if they so choose, to do it on their phone if they wanted to download the app. There's an app as well.
Perfect.
But we'll make sure that there's a stationary check-in point comparable to our current time clocks. It's just, it's not gonna do the little clicky punch thing.
Yep.
But it's all, just an electronic and it talks to our system then.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes. Motion is approved and passed and moved on to City Council. Thank you, Emma. Second, new business item is to set schedule to meet and continue 2026 budget discussions. It feels a little bit precarious where we're at. Maybe today, we have a lot of balls in the air with the budget. How often would you like to meet? We can meet weekly?
Every two weeks right now.
Every two weeks?
For now.
I think that, yeah.
Just for the, for now, till we get a little closer to where we're going? To get more info, maybe?
And where does that put us? Betty, we have the survey out on the roundtable on the ambulance. What was it, the 21st or 23rd?
Uh, 22nd or 23rd.
So, to have the first one after that would probably be the most advantageous because I think we're gonna have a pretty clear sense of direction where that component's headed. So, two weeks from Tuesdays again?
That's fine with me.
So, that would put the first meeting Tuesday, the 28th?
28th.
Is, there a time that we wanna stick to? Do we normally have them at 1:00?
We have been doing them at 1:00. It just depends on how much time you wanna afford.
Are we agreeable to 1:00 on Tuesdays?
Yep. Uh, for me, works.
Is there a motion to add to the next City Council meeting to have our next Budget and Finance Meeting Tuesday at 1:00 PM on the 28th of October?
I'll move.
Thank you, Counselor.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner. Counselors Kayler and Wagner, discussion?
Just for clarification purposes, first meeting, meeting the 28th at 1, are you looking to have it every, every other week thereafter? Or do you wanna get a few scheduled? That was kind of what I was just trying to-
Let's schedule weekly.
Okay.
And if we wanna cancel, then we can.
Do you mean, when you say schedule weekly, do you mean schedule one at a time? Or do you mean schedule them-
Yeah. Every Tuesday at 1?
Every Tuesday.
Okay, sorry. Just wanted clarification on that.
For clarification. Any more discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, that can be added to the City Council agenda. Thank you. Is there any other business, as it pertains to budget and finance, to come before us? Seeing none, I'll adjourn the meeting. And at this time, I'll call the committee of the whole meeting to order. It's 4:13 on Monday, October 13th. Counselor Holden is absent for the record. We'll begin first with the report from Human Resources. Sherri Stenzlin?
Hello. I'm gonna flip my report today. I have Chad Bellinger here with me from True Insurance. He was kind enough to come in on his day off. It's a holiday for them today.
Thank you.
So, and we're gonna talk about the retiree benefit renewal plan first, since there are a couple of options available to take a look at. So, if you look in your plan, you'll see you have rate information for three plans. The first plan is the current existing plan. And then, there are two alternate plans. A plan and an advantage plan, which both offer decreases. There are differences, obviously, between the plans where there won't be a change in cost to them. And that's the part where Chad's the expert and comes in on, on what those differences would mean to those retirees as far as the benefits. You also have a comparison sheet in your packets, which kind of lays out some of those differences for you between the three plans.
To be clear, and this would be, we get to decide what then becomes their pay-on benefits?
No, this is a, this, the city pays for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And so, there are currently 13 on the plan, eight of which are former city employees. Yes. Three are library employees and two are from the sewer district.
And I would assume that those are agreements from the past? How that came to-
Yes. Yes.
Mayor, if I may, just for a little background?
Please.
The history of that is the eight former city employees, at the, at the time, they were offering lifetime benefits upon retirement. But in lieu of that, they had to have a maximum, their sick leave had to be max, at the maximum, excuse me, and they forfeited that in lieu of lifetime benefits. So, it was a cost to them. I mean, that did not continually, I mean, paid the entire cost that it is costing the city over the years. But they did forfeit their maximum sick leave in lieu of lifetime benefits. That was sunsetted at a time back, I believe in 95, if I'm not mistaken. But there are no employees currently that have that type of benefit. And so, therefore, these last eight people are, that are on the plan are the only ones that, you know, and as they move on, that would end.
And I think the last person came onto the plan October of 2008.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Good background.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there a, how would you like to proceed? Do you have a recommendation or?
Well, I think from, from a retiree standpoint, from the employee standpoint, or the former employee standpoint, the, the existing plan would be ideal for them. That's the one they're most familiar with. It's not the most cost-effective, obviously. That, that comes with a, a cost increase to it actually this year. It's the one they're used to, the one they're familiar with and probably the best of the three, if you had to rank them, would you say?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I'm sorry. Um, there's, there's pros and cons both ways. Um, you know, the, the biggest thing that you're gonna see is price, obviously. There's quite a savings to go to an advantage plan. And they do, I mean, they actually pick up some additional benefits with that plan. And from the standpoint of just talking with Blue Cross, the, they're really, there's not a huge chance or that they would see any change in benefits, I mean negatively affecting them. The, the thing with it, though, is when we, we talk about advantage plans, I, I honestly, I deal with a lot of people in this age group and change is huge. They don't like to see change. So, that's one drawback of switching to a different kind of plan. An advantage plan, it's got a negative connotation to it. It really does. Mostly, you probably hear the term all the time and usually not in a good, in a good sense, especially up here in our area, these types of plans. But a lot of places don't accept them. But we're, typically, when you're hearing all that, we're talking about individual plans, not the group plan. The group plan is gonna be different. But these people, it, it may be a matter of just educating them. I don't know, you know, about the changes, if the, if a change was to be made. You know, they do get a lot of their information from having coffee with friends and family or whatever. And they'll probably bring up advantage and somebody will say, "Well, you better look into that," you know, type thing. So, that's the biggest thing for me. The biggest drawback would be the change for those people and the uncertainty that comes with that. But, but like you said, look at the cost. It is a big, it is a big deal cost-wise if you look at those two, so.
About $150 a month?
Is that per person?
Um, it's, it's a savings of $125-50 per, per month per participant.
Yeah, so.
Um, if you go with the group advantage, the third plan.
So, about $20,000 a year? Some of this, this, for the record, is there some, a digestion period?
Right. For city-specific, it's, it actually comes out to about $15,648 for the eight city employees.
So, the Board of Trustees and North Cooch is reimbursing us for the benefits that we're paying out on their, okay, so there's eight. So, the other five is, understand?
Correct.
So, Chad, when you say the change, then, the change, if they went, if we went to the advantage plan, would also be that the members are gonna see a $3,000 out-of-pocket maximum?
Um, that is on the benefit sheet, if you look at that comparison. But when you look at the out-of-pocket expenses for the different things, it's, it's all zero copays and coinsurance. That $3,000 is, with the advantage plans, they have to put that out-of-pocket maximum in there. It's just part of the, part of the plan, part of the law, how they have to do that. But there's actually nothing that would go towards it. It's, that $3,000 pretty much just isn't, doesn't affect anything, so.
Okay.
It's just part of the plan that has to be in there by law.
Is there a, when is the renewal date that we have to abide? When do we have to have a decision made by?
Well, I think they wanted it like three weeks ago, but that's what Chad told me anyway. No.
As soon as possible, I think was.
As soon as, yeah. It's, it's January 1 is when the plan renews, though.
Understood.
So, you're saying, Chad, that the word, just the word advantage plan is gonna be the, the kicker of any issue?
Uh, I, I, I think so. And change. I mean, just changing a plan. I mean, it's, you know, they know what they have. They, they're used to it. They've used it. They know, you know, what to expect. I just see it all the time. You know, change is tough. And that advantage, just that word advantage does have a lot of negative connotation with it these days, so. But again, that's more when you're looking on the individual side, not the group plan, so.
And I'm, I'm guessing they'll get all new literature, all new cards, all new-
Yep.
Everything. Their prescription drug plan will remain the same. But it'll still require new cards, I, right? I mean, I, I don't suspect they have a separate drug card, or do they?
I think they would. I guess I'm not totally positive on that. But that would be, irregardless of which, which plan for the health side of it, that, that drug plan remains the same. There's only one option there, so.
Right. Yeah.
And to be clear, are, is the idea that we, the council makes a decision today and adds it to a City Council meeting? Or we add the idea to the council meeting and decide at the council meeting?
That's up to you.
Well, that, that was, yeah. I was going to ask you which way you prefer to do it. You know, Chad is here today to answer any, any questions that you may have to help you get to that decision-making. I haven't asked him about his availability next week.
I got that, and when you, trust me, I understand the whole change is top thing, personally, not a favor. But once again, you'll be around to help them with that. They'll be able to contact you with questions and stuff like that.
Absolutely. Myself or Cindy would-
Right, and the, and the-
I do think that some are not locals, I believe.
Correct. Yes. We have both-
Whatever. It isn't like they're gonna be, and I figured out the case, not gonna be hung out to dry, you're local. I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable, but that's just me to move to the advantage plan.
That's, please.
I feel the same, but if it, the benefits are all the same, it's just the wording of it. I mean, it just-
Yeah. I, I mean, they, when you look at these types of plans, I mean, they, like, just in Minnesota, they both accept, you know, they're both accepted by, you know, 98% of hospitals and doctors or, you know, some high percentages like that. Once you get out of state, you know, they can, they can go anywhere that Medicare's, Medicare's accepted, which you're probably looking at a 90% participation rate possibly. They did say, this with Blue Cross, you know, in talking with them, they said, you, you might run into something where somebody might be seeing maybe a, you know, a small private practice or something that one might cover and the other does not. You know, when you're talking 90%, and you were talking about eight, 11 people, whatever. I mean, I, I guess the chances are, there is a chance that they could have a little disruption in their service. Could they find somebody, another provider? Probably.
Also, yes, with Blue Cross, I'll find it too.
Right.
Same thing.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not that plan, it's just-
Yeah. It may, it may be a provider that they're seeing that they would have to passively switch. I mean, but is there a chance? Yeah. Is it very high? No.
And, please?
Oh, I was gonna say, the other thing they checked on us because for us is, because we weren't certain, if this absolutely did not work out, we could go back to the plan that's currently on, they're currently on. But it would have to be at the next renewal, right? It would have to be a full year.
Could switch back next year.
But I, I don't think I would necessarily, I'd go into it with that in mind. But it is an option. I mean, you wanna try to make this work, if this is what we're gonna go with.
Right. And would you be willing to turn into motion? To add this to the next City Council meeting, the advantage plan? Counselors Kayler and Buller? And I just wanna say thank you because, you know, we're all under a lot of pressure. We've talked about the budget. We don't need to talk more about it. And these are typical places, I think, that, that get looked at. And with cities and these types of things, I mean, they, things change over time and we have a commitment to do it, but at a cost that we can afford, so. Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, that can be moved to City Council. Thank you.
All right. Unless you wanna talk about Minnesota paid leave?
You're up. We'll leave that to you.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you, Chad. Well, we're not gonna talk about that quite yet, but we'll get there. So, back in August, we had talked about the Parks and Facilities Assistant position and we had a couple of applicants for that after talking with Mike. They had requested three. I think that he is comfortable moving forward with two in that seasonal position. So, I am just looking to see if council is still comfortable with moving forward with two in that position that I would present at next week's council meeting for approval.
Is, is that new, can you refresh us on?
Yes. So, the Parks and Facilities Assistant, that's, that's a seasonal position. They come out and, they come in and help the full-time staff with like the tournaments and things like that. We stay, you know, staying open if, if someone were to call in sick or just kind of that fill-in type stuff. I think last year, maybe the most anyone worked was two days a week, maybe three. And they just kind of do that, that fill-in support stuff at, at Cary Park. We had three la, they had three last year. One came in rather late. I think it was close to the end of the year. This year, he, he has two applicants that he thinks he can move forward with just two.
And when would they be needed?
They would start, well, I would, we would put them on the council agenda ne, uh, next week for approval. And they typically start around November 1st.
And these are non- And these are non-full-time employees?
Correct, so that, like I said, they average sixteen to twenty-four hours per week.
Seasonally.
Yes, so I think one started in November, she was done in March, one started in late November, early December, was done in April, and the other one started in late December, she was done in May, so kind of, she stuck around, the one stuck around a little bit to do some painting and clean up at Cary Park.
And out of budgeted funds out of Parks and Recreation?
Correct.
I am fine with whatever the council decides, I'm going to, just to be clear and concise on the record, um, I'm not opposed to it, it's Parks and Recs, and it can go to the council, we can make our decision, I'm just hesitant a little bit, because until the budget process is done, and that's a moving, I don't, if the city gets in a position where we have to reduce staffing levels over a couple of years, um, I want to make sure that, that's dignified and, and fair across the board, um, if that is something that occurs, maybe it's not, so that's the only thing that in my mind that I'm concerned about. Councilors?
To be clear, this does reduce the amount of overtime that you have to pay. It is a cost savings from that perspective.
From overtime, yeah, thank you.
Pay a, a much lesser wage, given that these are not bargaining members.
Right.
I'll move forward with it.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wagner. Any more discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, that can get moved on, thank you.
Um, well, as promised, the paid leave policy, I put a draft in your packets today, um, it pretty much follows the template that the league provided to cities, do you have any questions on that? There, there's not a lot of wiggle room, mostly the state of Minnesota is, will determine if people are eligible or not eligible, and the city just needs to follow suit, so, um, uh, where applicable, I put in there, um, we have negotiated with the unions and with regards to their collective bargaining agreements, um, we are still working with the firefighter engineers and paramedics, so we are meeting with them on October twenty-ninth, but that does not impact this policy, because as, like I said, I put in there that they should refer to their collective bargaining agreement, so we will have an MOU with them, that they would refer to for those specific parts where it comes into play with regards to how we split the premium, and also how you top off the benefit, if, if they go out on leave, so. If, if there aren't any questions on the policy, I'm just looking to move it to the next city council meeting for approval.
So move.
Second? Thank you councillors Buller and Wagner, discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, that can go on to council, thank you.
Okay, so I just want to give you a heads up, though, in the meantime, the state of Minnesota is requiring employers to put notices out there from Minnesota Paid Leave that this law is out there, it's in effect, um, it's, comes out on, I don't know if it's their letterhead, but their logo on the top of it, I am going to start getting those notices out there this week, and the only reason, I, I would wait for the policy, but, uh, Chief Manasa has his ambulance and fire meetings this week, and I want to have them to him in advance of those, so he can start getting them distributed to his volunteers and his EMTs who are not here on a regularly scheduled basis, because we have to have them out by December first, and with the holidays in there, so the policy will not be going out, it is what the state is requiring us to put out there, so they have a poster, plus they have a notice that you have to individually hand to each employee and ensure that they receive it, or there could be fines involved if you don't do this, so, um, we'll get those notices out there as well, but the policy will go out after it is formally approved by city council, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep, just didn't want you to think I was putting the cart before the horse there. Um, also working on open enrollment, uh, for benefits, it's, it's pretty, um, it's a pretty passive open enrollment, it's mostly voluntary benefits, as all of us are under, um, some sort of flat rate plan through the unions, so they take care of the, the major part of it, and I'm sending out the voluntary pieces of it to employees, that'll go out in November, uh, the last thing is, uh, the Minnesota OSHA safety grant, so the city was approved to receive the safety grant, however, the ci, the grant was only approved for fifty percent, which means the city would be responsible for four thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and twelve cents, so that was for the surveillance, or the cameras in city hall and the, um, parking lot, so they would pay fifty percent, the city would have to pay the remaining fifty percent, so, since that was not how it was presented to you originally, I wanted to come back and see how you wanted to proceed with that, so they're holding it for us right now, and they understand that I had to come back to you and chat with you about this, to see how you wanted to proceed, um, and then I will, I will let them know after you've had an opportunity to discuss that.
And for context, we have the full amount assumed in the twenty-twenty-six budget for both security cameras and fabs, so we were planning worst-case scenario, anticipating we likely wouldn't get the grant, so this is actually a benefit to our twenty-six budget from that perspective.
And what was that amount?
Uh, we don't have that amount in party, but it's in our, um, capital outlay safety.
Yep.
I think if you were to do the fabs and the cameras together, wasn't it close to thirty?
I think it's around the thirty ballpark.
Because the fabs are pretty expensive, and the cameras were probably around, they would have been around eighty-two hundred, I suppose.
So for the full package, it would be thirty thousand less to forty-three, or forty-one thirty-six?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and how long will they hold the money for us?
Um, well, they're, they're doing a, another round, he said, I think after the first of the year, um, but I have to let him know, well, relatively soon, otherwise they'll just put it back in the, the fund to go out next year, I mean, conceivably we could reapply again next year, if we don't want to move, it doesn't mean we'll get it, but we could reapply for it.
Right.
Excuse me, can we apply again?
Yep, yep.
Forty, forty-one hundred and still apply again next year?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, you, you can only apply at a location every two years.
Okay.
But if, if we decided to forego now, we could reapply, we didn't take it.
And then get two thousand?
Pardon?
And then possibly get two thousand instead of four.
Maybe.
Well, and the whole.
Potentially.
And the whole thing, like with the fabs and all that, is where we get the third, but.
Well, and we.
For, for, out of that money they put away already in the budget next year, not that it's approved, but for another forty-five hundred, we can at least get cameras up and start this process, which I think is important to do, and then see where we're at with the fabs and other things later, if that's how we have to do, we might have to break it up into a couple of things, but I think at least the cameras will be a good start for us to take care of some security issues here. That'd be a motion, if you're caring for one, to move it.
I'll entertain it. Second? Second by councillor Wagner, as their discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, and that carries unanimously, thank you.
All right, I'm done, unless you have any questions for me?
Questions?
I felt like that was a lot.
That was quite the, quite the run.
Yes.
Thank you, Sheri. Fire marshal Baldwin with rental licensing monthly report. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council, um, in the packet you have in front of you, um, is the rental licensing report, um, for the month of September, that's where we're finaling up our onboarding process for the new year, um, July into June thirtieth of twenty-six, um, all rentals are currently licensed except for one, uh, four-plex on Main Street, and the owner has been notified, and he's actually traveling for work, so, um, he plans on getting that taken care of soon, um, so we're trying to work with him on that, um, just getting ready to start scheduling and, uh, get out and start inspecting these properties again. Any questions?
Uh, I don't see any, if you'd like to move on to Blythe.
Uh, Blythe packet also in front of you, um, year-to-date, um, as you can see, in the last month, we have forwarded a couple of properties onto the attorney, um, these have been properties that we've been, um, working on all summer, um, and also the past couple of years, that, uh, they just do the bare minimum, and then it falls back into having the neighbors calling and having issues, um, the one property, um, Second Avenue East, twenty-ten Second Avenue East, um, fifteen oh four Ninth Avenue, the one on Second Avenue East is, uh, right behind the Haller Ballfields, um, there were some things that, uh, were done there with the fence coming down, and now, uh, this summer, we got a lot of complaints from the kids that, families at the ball field about all the items that are being stored in the backyard and on the city right-of-way, city alley, um, so, we've tried to work with the homeowner, um, and it's actually her brother that's living with her, that's, has all the items stored out back, so, um, uh, myself and, uh, the building official met, um, with the homeowner a couple times, and he claimed he was going to call councillor Kayler, but I don't know if he ever did there, so.
Never has.
So, um, it's just at the point now, it's getting worse, and there's more overflow onto city property, so we forwarded that one onto the attorney to be dealt with, um, some other ones, um, as you can see, there's, um, a lot of, you know, minor grass, um, some more vehicles that we're dealing with, um, some of them have been addressed, um, and some we're working on scheduling a day for more pickups, so, um, any questions on that?
Questions for Mr. Baldwin? Thank you.
I just wanted to say, we just finished up with fire prevention week, uh, last week, uh, we had roughly two hundred and seventy-five kids back in the fire hall, um, and that was a very successful week, um, since COVID started, we haven't been able to have the kids come back to the fire hall, and this year, we made a pitch for it, and, uh, the schools were on board with bringing everybody back to the fire hall, so, uh, all the kids had a good time, and, uh, I've been hearing that a lot of them are going home and testing their smoke alarms and talking about electronics, because this year, uh, the topic for fire safety was charging to fire safety, so, um, that's talking all lithium-ion batteries and some other things in your home, so, good to have all the kids back in the fire hall, and they sure appreciated it, so, uh, just wanted to give you a heads up on that, that it was successful again, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next with building official report with Mr. Kelly Myers.
Also, thank you. In front of you, you see the numbers that we have, they are continuing to rise, it's typical of the fall, we're starting to see a lot more residential people closing up, of course, for the winter time, getting ready to go on that stuff, um, and working pretty diligently with, uh, a few wetland violations throughout this community, which is, um, very tasking and does take a lot of time, um, it is getting there, and I think tomorrow I'll be meeting with the fellows, and hopefully we'll be seeing some resolution of that, uh, zoning, zoning is, uh, the big popularity in the community is put fences up, and, uh, there's a lot of them gone up this year, and we have to look at their property lines to see where they're being placed in the correct spots, um, commercial projects, of course, we see the things going on, there's quite a bit going on at the school, we do have, uh, um, a project out at the old battalion building, that's going to be a therapy place, that'll be set up, and that's getting close to being its finish, and then we're also, I've also been working with, uh, um, the ICS company over at the jail project, and basically the jail, when I talk about the old space, we're talking about the second floor, what they may be able to utilize it for, so they're looking at options, and I've been working right with them to kind of see to make sure that we get, even though it was a jail, it's life safety items come into play, because they're set up a little bit differently than a, than a business-type setting would be, so we got to look at the exits and windows and that type of thing that go in there, um, permits are basically right on track to where they should be, and probably going to see the three hundred number, which is a normal year, um, and, uh, actually the fees are up pretty good, which is, uh, a good sign, even though it's a small project year, so.
Great. None at this time?
Okay, thank you.
We will now move to new business, and at long last, I believe joining us virtually is Philip Bucy from Bolton and Mink, and the Banshill Committee with a presentation.
Uh, yes, yeah, thank you, mayor and council, can you hear me?
We can.
We can hear you right off the bat.
Great, yes, a little better than our usual technology preamble, yeah, so today, I'm here to provide an update on the progress of the design of the replacement structure at Smokey Bear Park, uh, you, you'll have a, a packet in front of you, um, and, you know, what that does is it essentially kind of walks through, sort of at a, at a pretty conceptual level, the, the project that the, the committee has kind of decided to, to move forward with, um, you'll notice that it's a, a very faithful, um, sort of re, rebuilding of the structure that was there before, um, we are, uh, it's helpful to maybe talk about it kind of relative to what was there before, but, um, so there's, you know, there's smaller sort of storage support spaces, but, um, the new structure is not planning to include, um, restrooms like the existing structure had, um, and then additionally, they, there will be, um, sort of an accessible ramp that will be able to bring people from the kind of at-grade up onto the, onto the, the presentation platform there, um, I, I think, so the, on the, uh, third page, the kind of overall 3D view, um, you'll see the stairs sort of on the, on the south end, ramp on the north end, uh, the, another difference between this structure and, and what was there before is it, it does not incorporate those tiered steps, those tiered concrete steps, um, again, again, that's sort of done in support of accessibility, um, you know, it, people with, with the use of a wheelchair can, can, um, sort of traverse the whole performance platform, uh, a few other, I guess, things to highlight from that, few, uh, there, we're, we're structuring a couple of bid, bid alternates, right, so they'll, so what those are is, um, you know, it, it gives the council and city the opportunity to, you know, choose options based on, on budget, and what you'll see is, uh, well, we have an accessible path, sort of, that is a semicircle in front of the stage with a few pull-offs for people, um, that may have accessibility issue and, and can't, um, kind of walk across the grass, and then on the north end, there, the other thing that we're, Chris, thinking of as a, as an alternate would be a paved path that would connect the, uh, parking lot on the northwest corner of the site, that could be used for loading and unloading of equipment for performances, so you're not driving over your grass there, um, with the thought that, um, kind of, kind of less need for maintenance over time for that. That could be used for loading and unloading of equipment for performances, so you're not driving over your grass there with the thought that kind of, kind of less need for maintenance over time for that. The, within the packet, there's a conceptual floor plan with overall building dimensions. You'll see that the structure, I guess I'm not, I don't highlight this in the, in the packet, but. The original structure was about 90 feet wide. This one is, is 60 feet because we're, we just have the, the two support structures on either side of the arch band shell. So we're, we're building less building than was there before. We're also lowering the stage from the 50-inch height that it was previous down to 30-inch. Again, that's sort of in support of making the structure more accessible. There's also sort of less. Less intervention that needs to be done to make it safe from like a, from a fall perspective with respect to like guardrails and, and, and that sort of thing, so. Again, thinking about creating something with a very similar experience as before, but not being kind of overly heavy with the, the sort of fall production we need to design into it. And also, within the packet, primary elevations of the north, south, east and west. You know, we'll have, we'll have railings for the ramps and the stairs. The, the building finish will be stucco with integral coloring. Again, the thought being that that's a more durable and, and sort of less maintenance-intensive material that, that matches the aesthetic of the previous band shell. The, the, you know, it makes it so you don't have to like repaint it every five, 10 years. It's a much longer-lasting finish. Other finishes would be, you know, you'd, we would have a concrete base that would be stained to match the arch structure as well. And then steel doors and, you know, metal flashing sort of where required at the, at the top of the roof and throughout the building. I will, that's kind of my, that's my update. That's my overview. I guess any, any specific questions from Council or the mayor?
From the committee? What are the, please?
Oh, go ahead.
What are the next steps in the process in terms of? My understanding was we were paid out by the insurance company. The proceeds of the claim, but if we do proceed with the same structure, which basically this is, do they, do we go back to them and they pay out more for replacement? Or do we just have the money that's in the band shell account?
They have paid us out just part of the bid, the original quote from that pillar construction. We went, they brought it back to us. We looked at it. It's back in their ballpark on different items that we believed weren't commercial-grade equipment that was used in the quote. So there is still that difference that we are still working with the insurance company on. But once we're paid out for that, that is what our replacement cost is. That is what we have to use for replacement.
Thank you. And so from there, do we, the bid process, et cetera? And is there going to be a gap or?
We will, I think, there's a, I guess, the meeting today, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, was that, is this is to move it forward to go out for bid?
Yeah.
Inspects at the next meeting. See if it comes back with, and then we'll work from there with what we have and what we're available to get. As is stated before, Mr. Lukachek's been involved and he stated some possible fundraising efforts also, depending what we find we need and not, so. And I would like to thank Phil for coming up with the design here with all the ideas that were thrown at him at the meetings and not always so clear, but. Like I said before, I think it, it's a pretty good compromise of what some, everybody wanted. Not everybody got what, what they wanted with the more accessibility, the lower stage and stuff like that, so. Yeah, but we're here today to move, if everybody here on the council is happy with it, we have to move it to the next meeting to go out for bids.
To the next city council?
Yeah, next city council.
And is that a motion?
That's a motion if I'm, I'm.
Sorry, Counselor, Counselor Kaler, can I add a little bit of context to that as well?
Sure, that, yes.
So we are, yes, we are, today, we're asking essentially for the project to be brought to the next council meeting to be voted on, whether. To go out to bid and then sort of the subsequent steps for that would be, we're, we're targeting. Our, our actual like full set of construction documents to be issued early December with the thought being that. Before the end of the year, we, you would receive bids in hand from contractors and then in early June, mid-June. Sort of that's when council action would need to be required, or would be required to sort of execute or kind of move ahead with the project. So that's the next couple of, that's at least like the schedule for the next two and a half months or so.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Phil, for your hard work. Here's a motion on the floor by Counselor Kaler.
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. Is there any more discussion on that process before we vote to move it to city council? Seeing none, call the vote.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, that can be moved to city council as it passes unanimously. Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you to all involved with the band shell project.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Next item two, I'd like to invite Fire Chief Manasa forward to explain the inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing.
Thank you, Mayor. In a nutshell, this is a cooperative buying agreement, so very similar to think what state bid used to be. They have gone to these cooperatives now. Sourcewell is a big one and HG, HGAC is the other big one. State bid list, to the best of my knowledge, has kind of slowly gone away and been replaced with the cooperative purchasing agreements. We are a member of Sourcewell already and I thought we were a member of HGAC. We are not. There's not an expense to be a member of which. We just sign up and you can be that member and get the discounts they afford. I did not count the number of companies that are on or with HGAC, but it was, it was a boatload. Very good discounts on certain items from hand tools to fire trucks and ambulances, for example, so. Very good thing to be, be a part of. The reason this came up is I was looking for a quote from something and the first question was, are you a member of HGAC, which again, I thought we were. And that, that particular company I was looking at offered a 42% discount on their goods if we were a member, so that's quite substantial, so. Again, just, this is a cooperative purchasing agreement, not the only one around, but it is one we're eligible for. There is no cost to the city other than just signing the documents. The one notable thing is this entering on 10/21, which would be the day after the, the committee or council meeting. And then it does expire at 12/31 of 2025, but it is auto-renewing at the end of each year. So the way they set this up for application is the fiscal year you're currently in, so again, with an auto-renew, so we wouldn't have to do this again.
I will be joined.
Thank you, Counselor Buller.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler. Is there discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, approved unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number three, city council requests. First, public works recommendation, I approve interim pay adjustment for Assistant Public Works Director, which is. A memorandum that Sherry has provided us with some time ago, over a month ago. The reason that I had asked at a city council meeting, not necessarily to try and stop this, but rather to postpone it, was for more clarity. As we've changed the org chart, organizational chart in the city over the past few years. My question is, without question, Mr. Wallace has had a lot of new things added to his plate with the retirement or resignation of Ted Brokaw. But I think it would be pertinent for us to have at least a discussion whether. Are we looking to attrition out an entire job? And thus, expect him to fulfill those duties in which we would give him that pay increase? Or are we looking to fill a position? And I think that that's the first thing that comes to my mind. Particularly. In the sense that if we give out pay raises and, and that may be what we do, but let's say we do that a couple of times. And then we go and hire a director of public works and then those duties go away. Just as a council, those are the things that we tend to come under intense scrutiny for at times, so I think it's worthy of a discussion. But I think the main point is what, what is the path? That we're looking to take with the positions.
Well, like I said, again, I, when I suggested we do this for now to see how it works, not make any decisions till we find out how it's going. And we may find out that it's too much for one person to be doing both things like Mike Snow, public works and still in charge of the. Street department with some help with another employee. On that, I'm just seeing how it goes. We might find out we need to hire a director of public works or other than. If he doesn't want it or whatever and then move back to his spot the way it was if we decide we need those number of peoples. That's my thought, but.
My thought would be that if we do go that route, he should be asked if he even wants the job.
Right.
I think right now, it's, he's taking it as a fill-in.
Yep.
And I think he needs some adjustment for that, but if we're planning on going the other way, I think that's, that's an important part of it because I, I'm getting vibes that he likes where he's at, but it's just, you know, I mean, there. You don't always want to move forward. You want to be where you're at. I mean, it's, but we should ask him if he wants to do it and then move forward with that and decide that rather than try to decide something else.
And that's why we're discussing this. It's not, we.
And if we decide we need to have, we gotta, then we gotta hire somebody. I mean, that's, if we decide that's the way we need to go. And I know he's got a lot on his plate right now and it's, and it might be too much and that's why we had the positions before.
I think we should go ahead and give him an adjustment right now and with back pay like we do with the young man when they settle down. And then go to the street committee and you guys discuss it with him and find out what, what the plan is to be.
That's, that was the point of the discussion.
Yeah, and I, I would be fine with that.
Okay, so you're willing to present a motion to add this back to city council?
Yep.
And then we will, we can just add it to.
Yeah.
Public Works Committee to find that path forward.
Yes.
Okay, and is there a second? Counselor Buller, thank you. Is there more discussion? Please, Counselor Wagner.
What, what are the increased duties? We need to see that. And why aren't we spreading them out between, there's more than one person on this, right? Isn't Mr. Crosby involved in this too? Why aren't we spreading this out more before we move ahead too far? I don't see the back pay issue. What is his base wage now? What percentage is this increase? Is it comparable or is it more than what we thought of? And does he have the interim tag now? And prior experience and references before any thing for me, before council, but we can take it to council vote. Those are just some thoughts.
Well, I believe he's already sharing duties with Steve. I mean, he's delegated some out, but he still has extra ones that he's doing along with his other job. But we can move it to council and decide then.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, if, in the discussion period, I want to make sure that that information is presented to us. You've requested it. I think that Sherry could help with that. And, yeah, my feelings are, I'm, I, I understand the duties and there's a lot going on and all of that. So if we give the increase and then we go hire a director of public works, are we going to cut the pay back?
Exactly.
And that's my only question with it.
Yes.
Okay, so that's why I wanted to have the discussion. Because I know where these things lead.
And I, and that, in my head, that's what I was doing, but without it being, yes, I, you go back to, so there.
And I think we would still request to cover our bases for research purposes, what Counselor Wagner requested. Is there any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is approved, added back to city council. Thank you. Three B, approve Derek Hell for the internal posting of the maintenance worker one, equipment operator, plow truck position.
I'll move.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
Second.
Counselor Buller, this was moved back, so I would like to ask a few questions. Spawning from the attrition conversation in the street department. And I've lost track mentally today of when we advanced. I believe it was a loader operator position and then we were going to internal post. And if we couldn't find somebody internally, then we would decide whether or not we had to post externally. So my question is, with Mr. Hell, he serves the water department. And I believe operates the street sweeper and the excavator. So if he moves to another job, how are we going to backfill that position? And these things, I wanted them moved back because I don't feel like at times, we have enough discussion on them.
That position would have to be posted internally then too for, after this, this would be approved, it would be approved and that would have to be posted internally also for the amount of time that is allowed for that and then have to figure something out from there.
Okay. And is this position considered a downgrade? From the position that Mr. Hell is in to?
Yes, please.
Please, I'm trying to lead the discussion a bit, but we'd like some more information.
Yep, so as I recall, and it's, it's been a little bit of time, so this was, it was approved, I believe, at the September second council meeting. To post it internally, but it wasn't approved to post it externally for the one I had put Derek on.
Right, the one, the.
That's the next one.
Well, it was approved to post the maintenance worker one, equipment operator plow position, which was the position that Derek Hell had signed for and was going into. That had been approved to post nine-two. At that time, it was just approved to post internally and we were not approved to go externally to hire if no one internally filled it.
Correct.
So then that went on the next city council meeting for Derek to move into it. So there would be no add to staff. It was actually a demotion for him. I talked to Mike about that. I said, please make sure he understands. about that, I said, please make sure he understands, he's, he's taking a cut in wage to be able to do this, right? And Mike had that conversation with him, and Derek understood that, you know, and this was something he wanted to do, he wanted, you know, there, there's many reasons people may want to do something, just, you know, something different, try something new, you know, get out of a rut, whatever that might be, but anyway, he understood he wanted to move back. So then the next request that came, I believe it came along with the request to put Derek into the maintenance worker one, equipment operator, plow position, was to post Derek's position, which was the equipment operator, excavator, sweeper, there's been a lot of movement in public works, sweeper position, and that I, and that kind of got tabled at the same point, and I guess I assumed that that would probably be approved to post internally, but we would not go external to hire it. So that remains to be seen what would happen with that, if anyone would, would sign the posting for that or not, because it hasn't gone up yet. I, I assume that it would, it would be, it would be a promotion for a maintenance worker one, to go to that type of a position, but.
And so, if all this goes as planned, and we get to the step of internally posting for the excavator position, do we think we'll have an applicant? And the reason I ask that, I know that we, maybe we don't have a answer, but then if we go externally, are we creating a new FTE at the end of the day, or has it just been a huge shuffle in which we bring in a new FTE to replace one that?
Well, right now, I mean, since, and Mike, please step in, if I'm missing something here, but since Brad Hagan left in August of 23, we've just been shuffling people around, we haven't added an FTE, so they've been down in FTEs since then. Oh, 24, sorry, 24, August of 24.
Okay. Well, that's why-
Or the show game.
And that, and that's how this all started, with his retirement, and then, because it had the, all the different guys that applied, or signed for it, they all did it for 30 days, and then decided something like it, that's how we got to here right now.
So we've just been kind of backfilling since Rory took the lead position.
So if someone approves the, so yeah, I guess if someone signs for the excavator sweeper job that's already working with the city, they, they signed for it, and then if we decide to fill that person's position for moving up, then we'd be a full-time employee, we'd be adding or replacing Brad.
Okay.
If, if that makes sense, what I said there?
It does, I'll try to ask my last question.
Okay, you can ask more than one.
If Derek takes the job, okay, fine, and we internally post for excavator, and we don't, we have a wall where Derek is off doing a different job, do we have somebody to fill the excavator position on a part-time basis?
Well, I know that's not me. Mike?
That's a good question, I mean, you don't know until they sign it, obviously, but we have some qualified candidates, whether they want it or not, could be a total different scenario, I mean, example, when Mr. Hagan retired on August 2nd of 24, that person that's now in his position was in a greater position, and he's just been in a greater for years, and he just wanted to help, he wanted to try something different. So, a greater position is a full-time equipment operator, equipment operator year-round, so that's a promotion for somebody that's, doesn't, he is not in equipment, or is only in it for six months of the year, example of plow trucks. So, somebody took that position, and that's where we're, where we're at now with Mr. Hell, and he chose to go from full-time equipment operator to a six-month plow truck and a six-month maintenance worker. And there's all kinds of reasons why, you know, he didn't, I didn't specifically ask him, it's up to him, that's his choice, but maybe he just wanted to get out of what he was doing, you know, so, but we do have a couple qualified individuals, whether they sign that excavator posting or not, I can't answer that, there's been some things going in the last year that surprised me, so.
Understood, well, thank you, Sherry, and thank you, Mike, and is there a motion to move B and C back to city council? By Counselor Buller. Is there support for that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler, is there any more discussion on the topic?
Yes.
Please, Counselor Wagner.
So, C also includes the authorization to advertise externally.
Thanks for bringing that, yeah, I would amend my motion to approve.
We didn't agree to that.
Good, thank you for the catch, are you looking for the motioners to amend?
Please.
I will amend, that it's just internal posting.
That's what I thought it would start with, yes, I will.
Okay, so we're in understand, to strike through externally. Any more discussion, thank you, Counselor Wagner. Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, those can be moved back to city council, thank you. D, consider replacement options for an information systems administrator due to resignation of Todd Ojala. I will hand this to Betty and Sherry at this time.
Mayor and council, what you have, what you have before you is some information on the IT position, what they, what he's currently working on, one of the critical things he's currently working on with our police department is an audit with the BCA, that is intense, it's taken some extra time, we have worked with the consortium that you have in the packet, he's been guiding and helping with that, because he has expertise in that, and so that's why he reached out with some, a statement of work for the rest of the year to help, you know, make sure that we don't lose anything or drop the ball on that specific item, he is well-versed in that, however, as a whole, I think there's probably organizations out there who can help us either on a short-term basis to help with managed IT, and maybe come in and do an audit on our system to see if a full-time IT is needed. I, I believe we do need full-time IT with this, with the size we are, the security, the data breaches that are out there, all the different things, however, I know some of the, you know, virtual things and managed IT is very, very good today, too, so I, I don't want to close the doors on options, I want to leave the options open to, to what's out there. So, in the interim, I would like to reach, you know, this Minnesota Security Consortium, and work with us through the end of the year, at least with PD, on the BCA audit specifically, and any of the PD concerns they may have for their security over there, since they're not, you know, with, under the county's envelope anymore, and they are on their own. And then, whether we put out quotes or RFPs for bids or quotes to provide IT services for the city, you know, I laid out a few things here, and so, kind of looking for you guys to give me some direction as well, on where you think we need to go with our size, with where we're at, I know we do have a gentleman in the audience today who, who does some IT work as well in the community, so he's local as well, he had seen it on the agendas and things, so he had, you know, interested in, you know, coming in and helping out if there's a need as well, so, that's what I have for some information to start the conversation, and if Todd or anyone else has something to add, that'd be great.
Well, thank you, Betty, yes, Todd is moving on, it's not a secret at this point, I would, to the best of my knowledge, I would consider it an amicable departure, in the sense, what I'm trying to get at, is that I believe that Mr. Ojala is still willing to help or give some transitional assistance or guidance on his way, so, I mean, these things can be tricky, but they're going to happen, and how can we have something that's relatively seamless as we move on, and are, are needs going to be replacing essentially a body or an FTE, or is that something that, as technology changes, we try to do, do cloud-based or managed solutions, this is not my forte, maybe it's someone else's, but it's obviously, I think with the water plant and police, probably police most importantly, and fire, that this, it's, it's a big topic, and I know from discussions with the county, that Counselor Wagner and I had, the IT is, it's, it's interesting, shall we say, so.
Well, if you don't mind me, at least recommending that for sure, we go, we need to go with Minnesota Security Consortium for the LEC, so they, they need to have a lasso and a security officer for the BCA to continue using their files and network, unless things have changed, is that correct?
Yeah, before, before number four, I just had, I'd like to have a quote provided for the whole city, and not just the police department, so you can get any whatever services he offered for the entire city at that price point, and he also, I talked to him this morning, he told me, the 2025 year-end, you have in front of you as well as, I believe, 2026, and you can terminate in 2026 at any time if you're not satisfied with your service, you really just want to help our, our city, basically, it isn't just the police department, it'd be the whole city at that price.
For $4,200?
Yes.
And, just as a side note, there, through, one of these organizations that we belong to, is this something we want to consider reaching out? What are other cities doing of ours? I have no idea. And also, maybe back to D for a minute, was Mr. Ojala willing to continue to work on a part-time basis, or is, just to understand this departure?
Yeah, it was my understanding that for a short period of time, he's willing to work a few hours a week to, to help us out through the transition, yes, if that is, if that is something that we would like to do, we would need to draft a legal document and contract in order to do that.
Understand, is that something that the council would like to pursue through council action? And at this time?
I, I think, I think we do need to, at least temporarily, go for some type of RFP to, to get us through the transition, till we decide what we want to do, because we're going to have to keep running, even with Todd's help, but he's, time's going to be limited, I'm sure, but even, just on a, you know, temporary basis, see if, put out for some quotes or questions, and see if, you know, see if somebody's willing to do that, to help us, until we figure, like I said, kind of like Betty said, with an auditor, I'm sure we probably need a full-time one with all the stuff that goes on, but we're still going to need somebody as we're looking for, a full-time person, if that's the way to go to get us through.
Please, I'll make a motion that we put out, hire for a full-time IT person going forward, whatever you got to do there, Betty.
I'll second.
We need it.
Well, that's my thoughts as well.
Well, I'm fine with that, too, I'll second that, I didn't know where-
Thank you, Counselor.
It may take a while till we see if anybody, you can find anybody, you know, they're not everywhere.
What, and-
But do you need this Cisco thing, too, maybe?
We'll move on to that.
I jumped ahead, I thought they're all together, how we're talking, so.
Okay, on the, on the motions by Wagner and Kaler to put out an RFP or post the information systems job, call the question on those motions.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, motion carried, that can be added to city council now as an addendum to item D, do we want to pursue a legal contract with Todd for part-time services until we find somebody that, just to clear up any gray area?
I'll make that motion.
Be comfortable with that, also.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wagner and Kaler, is there any clarity needed for the minutes? Okay, that looks good, call the question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, motion carries, that can be added, thank you again, now we'll move to new business, item four, which is to consider the Minnesota Security Consortium agreement for virtual chief information security officer for the remainder of the year, which Chief Koscheck has touched on, and I would delegate to anyone else on the council who knows more specifically about this, before we approve this, as my understanding is, as a stopgap?
Yep.
Yep.
With the departure.
Yep.
Okay.
And yep, would be my motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Counselor Buller, discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, to move that to council unanimously, thank you, is there any other business at this time, ask Betty or council or staff? Seeing none, move to Counselor Buller, Airport Commission report.
It wasn't at the last meeting, I was not available, I had doctor's appointment, and my attendee was Counselor.
I was supposed to take notes? No, I do, we had, they were talking about possible, I know, they talked early about vacating 108 for possible hangers and where to go, so there's discussion about that, there were some people concerned that live in the area, so they're going to look at possible different locations for the hangers at this time, and then just wrapped up some of the normal runway stuff coming together, ordering some equipment, was what was happening, I remember.
Would you like to, thank you, and would you like to continue with Kita?
I didn't take very good notes on that one, either, I know we're going to Big Falls next week.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes. Just more, we talked about what we did with Felix here, extending the, the purchase agreement time for another year, I believe it was, trying to get it all together and coming through, and otherwise, we just talked about normal going on around the county, I believe.
Thank you. North Coach?
That'd be me.
That'd be you.
We've got our, NHR meeting coming up on Thursday this week, for, just for clarifying what Sherry brought up about the stick and safe clause and stuff, and how we're going to incorporate it to, into the department, they're into our policies, and our next regular meeting is going to be next week, Tuesday, at eight o'clock.
Thank you. Any other business? Please, Counselor Wagner.
Last week, Counselor Kaler and I met with the rec hockey board to discuss Cary Park, and Administrator Bergstrom was with us, and the board from the rec hockey group on a plan going forward for Cary Park. Good meeting.
Thank you for the update. Any other? Seeing no further, it's 5:30 PM, and the meeting's adjourned.